No, he'll be here. He's on his way. He's just...
Jessica Wall, we're still getting ready to the agenda item number three. I didn't think of it till now. Do we have copies? So when time's right. But you've got them. Okay. We don't need them right now. Is Eddie on?
Do we have Eddie yet?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm on.
Okay. Welcome, Councilmember Cook. We'll go ahead and officially begin our February 19th, 2013 town, Gilbert Town Council study session. We have our first agenda item to get ready for Thursday night, and then I note our second agenda item is being rescheduled and will not happen today, and then we'll move to a third and fourth option. We have a couple of council members that, one may be trying to call in on Thursday, one will not be able to call in, and so to the best we can today, I might be asking additional questions. Not any voting today, but still to make sure that the two council members that may not be here Thursday night have a chance to express feelings and therefore we're aware of it. So we begin by turning to my right. Councilmember Peterson, do you have some items that you would like discussed as part of our agenda? Item number one.
Just item number eight, Mayor.
Councilmember A, Council Vice Mayor Cooper.
Twenty may be one of the ones you were referencing, and I think we should talk about that.
Councilmember Taylor?
Nothing in addition to what's been said.
Councilmember Daniels? Councilmember Cook?
I do not.
I had, for planning purposes, in addition to eight. I'll add sixteen. So we'll go eight, sixteen, and twenty. Make a couple of comments about meetings, and then we'll move to agenda item number two. So agenda item number eight. Melanie, please.
Melanie Dykstra, Interim Parks and Recreation Director, and I can answer any questions regarding number eight.
Please.
Mayor, I've already asked Melanie quite a few questions. Some more may come up, but mainly I wanted to kind of talk with the council for a minute about this event, and I'm concerned by the expense. We're 7,000 more than we were last year, and I understand there was some live and learn with that. Last year, they had the event and felt like there were some things that were underlooked, if you will, underestimated for the needs. And so they've adjusted in accordance with that. But I give you an example of where I don't know that we need to contribute to the event in certain ways. So the, if we look at the request for waiver, they only asked for four things, and they're really kind of three categories: police, fire, and really traffic, which is barricade and traffic direction. But we've offered a lot more than that. And, well, I say a lot more than that. We've offered a few things more than that. I don't know that we should. They didn't ask for it, and there may be ways for them to have their volunteers or some other, get a special deal through people they know to get some of those other things handled. So that was one concern, but I'll just start that off, and I just kind of want to see what other thoughts are on this.
Melanie, on one issue that came up last year, and you didn't bring it up yet, and so I don't want to take a tangent, but I think it's still good for the council to hear. Because of this arrangement, that there's a permit that is processed, and physically being at Central Christian, on Central Christian property, in a sense, we're guests. At the nearby soccer fields at Camp Bavardi High School, that's more of what I would call official town locations. So last year, when individuals wanted to get signatures for campaigns, that was an issue that was discussed, and with the special permit process, does that put us in the same position as last year, where we're guests, we're following their procedures, it is a town event, but individuals would still not be able to use it as a place to get signatures?
Are we talking about in the area that's town-owned or church-owned?
Church-owned.
It's up to the church as to whether it wants to permit that. The public forum issue that we were dealing with only involves town property.
Okay, thank you. So it really is similar to last year, that if, because it's on church property, if they ask a resident trying to get a petition signed not to do it on church property, they have the right to do that.
Yes, but it's, you know, there's nothing that says you can't discuss with, discuss the issue with the church and ask the church if it will consent to have people circulate petitions.
Thank you.
Or whatever they're circulating.
And I'm not even sure if it'll be so much for this year. It'll obviously be in future years. And by background, and I think the council knows this, the reason for doing it at Central Christian is that we ask to be invited. So it is their July 4 celebration that they would do independent of the town, and they opened up their doors, in a sense, for the community to join. And because so many people came, that's where really the question of how do we make sure we have proper police and fire and additional support. So I think, Melanie, back to what Councilmember Peter was saying to the question, they are also putting in a great effort, and I think in the council communication, it was $40,000 plus dollars of their efforts, that they're going to do independent of whether the town would join them. But we've asked again if we could join, and so we've tried to accommodate. And it's really the town saying, in order to promote the public safety at an event like this with so many people attending, this is what we need. It's not so much that they're asking for the police and fire and additional support. We are saying, this is what town leadership is recommending that the council approve. Is that correct?
Mayor, councilmembers, the process normally for a special event would be that an applicant, and this is Central Christian Church, who is the promoter of the Fourth of July activity, they do submit through the special event process their event, which is reviewed by the event team. During that process, it is identified what the necessary public safety needs would be to support the event safely within the town, and that's where the fees are generated from as to what it would cost to put on that type of activity. In the case of Central Christian, they have requested a fee waiver for the, as Councilmember Peterson noted, the police, fire, and basically the barricading waivers. In the past, we have waived and contributed the Parks and Recreation Department fees, as well as environmental services, which is the trash, the additional locations, and the porta-johns that come with a couple of those locations. Those are not specific to public safety, but they do, they are the viewing sites. So in this regard, if they were to do the event completely independent of the town, these would be the full cost they would bear based on providing a safe activity within the town of Gilbert.
The year that they last did it on their own, and you may not know the answer to this, and it could be something we could research, did they need police and fire support? Or on a Sunday, they have a lot of traffic there, and they have a lot of their own congregation trained to get cars in and out, and I don't think that every Sunday we have police and fire down there. I assume that we don't. And so if they did a special permit, it's possible that they would have a plan of using their resources, that they probably wouldn't need police and fire, if it's just their congregation.
Mayor, councilmembers, if it was only an invitation to their congregation, unfortunately, with a fireworks opportunity that is visible in the sky, then technically it becomes open to the public, because there isn't a way to control that type of activity. I believe when they conducted that, the three or four years ago, we had a, an additional Fourth of July celebration going on within the town, which would have split probably the traffic up, the amount of participants, and the activity in general. I believe on any given Sunday, they do have police doing traffic control down there just to have the in and out proceed smoothly. But understanding that this event is now well advertised as the one and only Fourth of July celebration in Gilbert, there is a recognized impact within the community that will be on traffic and police.
Right. And Councilmember Peterson, I understand your comments. What you're probably hearing me say is, we ask if we could be invited, and therefore, and in past years, we did use town resources to pay for the fireworks. So it seems like we should feel comfortable, at least if this is what town leadership has said, needs to be covered with fire and police and so forth. I do remember the year. I don't recall myself if they had additional charges, because we had a lot of the community at Big League Dreams, and a lot of the community there. And, you know, we could do that again. If we wanted to say, go forward with your celebration, we'll find another one, I think that we would still spend the same amount of money and more, because then we would be paying for the fireworks. So I, what you're hearing me say is, I'm okay in proceeding, but let's open up to other council comments. Councilmember Daniels?
Thanks, Mayor. I think this is one of those, excuse me, turkey situations where we put ourselves in a little bit of a predicament. The community has spoken. They want a fireworks celebration, and a Fourth of July celebration. I attended last year at Central Christian and enjoyed it very much. We actually ended up going to the soccer complex to view, and it was a lot less crowded. But this is one of those things where we're either going to have citizens pulled over on the side of the road in maybe an unsafe way, or prepare ahead of time and make sure that our citizens are safe. And so, again, because it's in the sky, it's a public, it is a public event, whether it's endorsed or supported by the town or not. It's still going to end up being a public event just by its nature. I'm fine with proceeding. The only thing that I saw, Councilmember Peterson, and pertains to your comments, is $140 for trash. That's something above and beyond. Did you see something in addition to that, that they didn't ask for? That's the only thing that I saw.
No, the, pretty much the public works, I'm sorry, parks and rec, that would be the main section I would see. They didn't really, I don't think, ask for.
No, they didn't ask for it, but we are providing, I guess, above and beyond the Central Christian site. Now the town is providing additional sites from which to view the fireworks, which I tried to get into Central Christian Church's parking lot last year. It took me about 30 minutes to get in, just by the nature of how many cars. So this year, I'm only going to the soccer complex, because it'll take a lot less time to get there. So I think providing overflow opportunities, and considering that those are public spaces, our citizens very well may be going there anyway to watch a public presentation in the sky. So it's, again, it's one of those probably less, less-than-clear situations. We are providing overflow site, but we're not providing overflow site for Central Christian. We're providing overflow site for Gilbert residents.
Councilmember Taylor?
Melanie, I don't know if you know the answer to the question. We can get some follow-up, but do we know what the minimum code requirement is for an event of this size, in terms of, you know, these particular buckets?
Councilmember Taylor, Mayor, there are no minimum requirements stated per code. Every event is based on a case-by-case basis. Police and fire are not able to do that until each event is reviewed on its own merits, because one event that does have 1,000 people, but maybe is on a very, very small parcel, may need additional resources just to direct traffic properly. So every event is done on a case-by-case basis, and there is no form, specific form really applied. They just do look at traffic patterns, and they do look at how many people are estimated to attend, either from past history or just the nature of the potential event, and then they design the requirements, per se.
What was attendance last year estimate?
It was 30 minutes waiting to get in the parking lot attendance, I think.
Mayor, Councilmember Taylor, I, you know, I'm not sure. I think it might be over 20,000 that did.
And Councilmember Daniels is correct. I've driven around just to get a fill, and there are people everywhere. So it gets to that, if we're going to do it, and if this is what town leadership has said it will take for the public safety, it's hard to not feel comfortable with that. And especially to Central Christian to say, "Thank you for doing the service," and doing our part, and they've already put $40,000 into it, and saying our thanks is by not charging you more. Councilmember Taylor?
Another follow-up. What, what efforts are there in raising business sponsorships or other sponsorships to cover some of the costs or do some cost offsets?
Mayor, Councilmember Taylor, I am not aware of what Central Christians' funding opportunities are for themselves, but this is not an official town event that our staff members are looking to get sponsorship for at this time.
The reason I ask, Mayor, if I may, is we see some, a couple of other events. I mean, you know that I've been on Constitution Week, and then there's the excellent Fourth of July in Mesa. And for one of the events, or one of the line items here, like for emergency services, Southwest Ambulance has been a great community sponsor. So not only will they provide that as part of that, sometimes they'll put some cash in to cover, offset some of the costs on that. And anyways, happy to share any information or experience that we've had to kind of share. But what I like about that model is not only does it help reduce some of the taxpayer expenses, but it brings more of the community and more of the businesses in, you know, to help and participate and support some of these events. It's more inclusive. So happy to help however I can on that.
Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, so there's kind of two points to this issue that I'll make real briefly. I'm not about picking and choosing, as I think I've said enough recently, but if I had a favorite event, it would be the Fourth of July. There's no doubt. I love.
You're picking.
I love the Declaration of Independence. I quote from it probably more than, well, more than most people I meet. But Mayor, there's something fundamentally strange about us saying, "We're going to force you to celebrate freedom." We're going to force you to. We're going to take your tax dollars. We're going to subsidize an event that celebrates freedom, whether or not you want to participate. Now, in my opinion, people who want to celebrate freedom, they could come, and we, they could throw some money in a hat. They do that up in Heber. We've gone to their event. They have their hat. It's a voluntary donation. Most everyone puts something in, because they're going to go enjoy it, and it's great. So the bottom line is, I'm not about picking this event, even though it's my favorite, to be subsidized, and all the other ones have to be cost-recovered. I just, I don't think that's fair. But I know I'm not going to win on that. So my question now is, my question now is, how can we minimize the taxpayer expense? And it goes to the question that Jared asked. So we can't do sponsorships the same way. It's not our event. Are there some other things we can do? And I talked a lot with Melanie. So the fire and emergency services, could we, could we reach out to Southwest Ambulance and see if they would be willing to provide, either at a discounted rate or for free? I don't know. We could work with Central Christian to see what details we could work out, but there may be a way to minimize these costs. So there's, you know, again, when you've got the sole source and there's not competition, that's another concern I have, is I know with police, that's part of our code, but with fire, if there's other options, and they still have to submit a plan for security and safety, and we still have to approve it, that's fine, but we don't necessarily have to provide that service. It's like, the town doesn't have to build the house for me. They just inspect it, okay? So I'm trying to look at some of those other options as well, and I don't know if there's any interest in pursuing that, but that's my intent.
I think both these comments, I'll remind and then say, there's really every option that we should consider, but the one reason, this is the third year we've done Central Christian, and the one reason why we haven't done that is it's their celebration. And so let me just back up, and I realize I'm repeating myself from past years. So three years ago, what had happened in Gilbert for many, many years was it was Gilbert Promotional Corporation that did the Fourth of July celebration. And typically, similar to Heber, you would come, and you would pay, you know, $5 or $10 for the family. And they did get the Southwest Ambulances and other groups, and so that's how it was paid for. And the town, I think in our budget, we did the fireworks, if I remember.
Mayor, councilmembers, I'm not aware of the specific, but I do know we did fund a good, around $15,000 at the time.
So the town did have some funds, and when GPC pulled out and said they could not do the celebration three years ago, it was with very little time that we went to Central Christian to say, "Could we join your celebration?" It went quite well, worked out. They are going to keep doing it every year, whether the town does one or not. So we could do our own. It's just a little tricky to say, "Hey, Central Christian, go fundraise," or "We're going to fundraise for your event." So that's the complexity. If we pulled out and did our own again, like through a GPC, then we have all the flexibility we need. If we continue with this model, it's not that we still don't have the ability to ask, but it's just different. It's their event, and they've said, "We'd love to have you come join us if you'd like," and so far, the last three years, we've said, "We'd like to."
If we have responsibility for some of the expenses, we should have the opportunity to raise some of the revenues. I mean, that just makes sense to me. So, I don't know. I think in a partnership is fine. I think it's great. We can work together, and there's probably a way to make it a win-win.
Sure.
I think that. But I just think that maybe we need to do a little more negotiation and see if we can bring the cost down. I mean, if before, when it was our event...
Negotiation with whom?
With Central Christian, to see what.
Okay. That's the part, you're, you've got to listen to me. We have invited ourselves. They're doing this for us and inviting us. What we could do is do our own celebration, which is fine. If we want to pull out, then we can do all the fundraising. But this is their event, and they have been gracious enough to invite us. And at some point, we need to say, "Thank you," and not say, "You have to raise money for this." That's not fair.
What, we would be raising the money. I'm just saying, we could ask how we might help.
That's right, but you said Central Christian. That's what I'm saying, is, we could do it. You could direct staff to go ahead and raise the $17,000. That would be fine, but it's not fair for us to go to Central Christian, where they're already putting $40,000 into it and asking them to do more. That's my point. Is that, are you agreeing with me?
All I'm trying to do is find ways to lower the cost for the taxpayers, Mayor, that's all. So I'm not asking them to do any, I'm just saying, can we get some sponsorships? I know it's their event. I'm not trying to big, put a big burden on them, but they're also coming, you know, requesting waivers as well. So I don't know how this works. It is tricky. I agree. This is complicated, but...
And that's okay. If we direct town leadership to go out and get sponsorships, great. I'm just saying, you made a comment of, "Let's go to Central Christian." I don't think it is the right thing to do to say, "Central Christian, raise the money," or, or put more into it when they already have. But I, we could pull out. We could direct staff to go raise the money to cover the $17,000, which is a right and something we could do if you'd like.
Whatever we can do to lower the cost. I didn't mean to dictate something to Central Christian. That wasn't what I was intending to say, so.
And I just have to, I'm speculating here, but since this is their event, I think, you know, sponsors typically, some like to do it anonymously, but others like to have their name in lights, if you will. And that may not be appropriate in this situation, especially, you know, we can't force our sponsors on another group if they're not wanting to have anyone on there, if they're just doing it as a community service. And so the sponsorships may be a little more challenging to sell unless we're promoting those sponsors only on the town-owned property or something. This is, this, to me, sounds like more of a conversation for next year as opposed to this year. I think we have a, this is really a not-that-large-ofamount of money. It's way less expensive than it would be if we had to do it on our own, and we certainly can't do it on our own this year. There's not enough time to arrange all the sponsorships that we would want. So my thought is, let's keep this conversation going with an eye maybe toward the next year as opposed to this year.
Mayor, I'm sorry, real fast, if I could just jump in. I think we have enough information to make a decision on Thursday night, and if we could move on, we have a lot of other things to talk about, including a presentation, so.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Peterson has...
I just want to clarify, when I said negotiate, what I meant was the very point that Councilmember Cooper's raising, is that it is their event, and so if we were going to do sponsorships, we'd have to coordinate with them what that would look like. So that's, that's all I meant by that, Mayor.
Thank you. Agenda item 16. Jessica.
Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Jessica Fiero, and I'm the Community Development Supervisor for the town, and I'm happy to answer any questions about item 16.
Please give us an overview.
Okay. Mayor, councilmembers, item 16 is a Community Development Block Grant-funded program. This council, sorry, part of this council approved this program back in May of 2012 for this fiscal year, and we are now at a point where we would like to implement the program. And so I'm bringing forward some program guidelines that we would like to move forward with this program. We have at least one potential property that we'd like to start on, and possibly another. And so what you will find is program guidelines that basically show how the, how the program would work, how someone would apply the process in which we would assess dilapidated structures and remove them properly, and the type of contract and information that the resident would need to abide by in participating in this program.
Any concerns? Thank you. Item 20. Jessica, please.
Mayor, members of the council, item 20 is a recommended policy for the Neighbor-to-Neighbor Utility Donation Program. The policy would just provide some documented, structured guidelines for the public and our residents and those who donate, on how the funds are collected, how we distribute them back out into the community, and, and the use that we would use for those donations. So while this program has been in place since 2009, we really haven't had a, an official policy that the public can look at so that they know that there is consistency on how their donations will be collected and distributed.
Any discussion? Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor Lewis. Jessica, I see there's a limit of $20 that someone could donate. Is there a reason why there's that limit? Maybe I just don't know.
Mayor, Councilmember Taylor, there, the limit of $20 is just to do it through your utility bill. Someone can make a larger donation, but it would need to be mailed in by a check to the, that's just a technical limit.
Okay. And then is there, I know we're kind of building and pulling things together on this. Is there something built in where we stop and look back at the original objectives of the program and say, "Okay, here's what we're seeing so far. Here's why we started this. How does it match where we have opportunities for improvement?" Is there something built in, or is that something, is that an opportunity?
I can probably help. Sorry, Jessica, to interject. When we started Neighbor-to-Neighbor, it was an idea from a previous council, and a great idea to allow citizens in the community to donate dollars through their utility bill to nonprofit organizations and organizations that provide services in the town. When we sort of developed the program, the concept was to get it started, and we'll sort of build the rest of the pieces. So this is the other piece. Our objective is to allow citizens to donate to organizations that are providing service within the town. But as far as our objective, we don't have a set dollar amount that's a goal at this point in order to get to. This is, this piece is the next building block that will allow us to essentially say where that money will be used. money will be used and how it will be allocated. So that's kind of where we are.
Thank you. Any other comments? Vice Mayor Cooper?
Just to clarify then, this really sets parameters and categories, even perhaps priorities, but we're not getting to the specific point in the process where we're identifying, you know, X dollars from Neighbor-to-Neighbor go to this group or that group, right? This is more at the higher level.
Mayor, Vice Mayor Cooper, that's correct.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Just from the perspective of the Nonprofit Support Subcommittee, when we talked about this, the main thing we wanted to accomplish here was to create trust with those who donated to those funds. So they knew there was an official town policy, and it was spelled out that they could read and understand what we were bound to as far as how the money was used. So that's the goal, and we figured, you know, the more trust there is, the more transparency there is, the more people are going to want to donate. And so I think that this goes to that end.
Thank you. And your leadership as a Subcommittee head helped make this happen, so thanks. Any other comments? Okay, thank you. Don't go far. I'll just make, related to Thursday night, this is logistics. We have a, our Student Citizen of the Month at 6:30, and the executive session has been moved to the end of the meeting so that some of us could participate in Chandler's State of the City. For planning purposes, we'll still need probably someone here to just keep the group organized. And so how many of you are planning on going to the Chandler State of the City? Okay. Okay. So those who are not, and I realize a couple of council members won't be here on Thursday night, if you could just plan on being here at 6:30, those who are attending do have a plan in place to be here by 6:30, but probably 6:29 to 6:31. So we'll do our best to try and fit both in, and thank you for that. And any questions then on the Thursday night meeting? Vice Mayor Cooper?
Just a question. Agenda item 15, I think, is, well, my understanding is that we're not quite ready with the agreement and that kind of thing. Is that...
To town leadership, the plan as to that would be moved to, would we say March 7th, or would we not specify a date yet?
Yeah. Mayor, members of the council, staff is going to formally request that items 14 and 15 both be formally moved to the March 7th agenda, not to be dealt with at that time.
And Mayor, since this was, since the notice of intention was adopted, setting the date of the 21st, it'd probably be most appropriate to continue the agreement item, as well as the zoning items, as opposed to just move them, a formal motion to continue them.
Right. Vice Mayor Cooper, we'll look for your leadership to help make that happen. Thank you. Thank you. Anything else on the main agenda?
Mayor, I just have one more. And that is 1A, which is our Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee coming to report on an annual basis what they've done at Youth Town Hall. And to that note, I will say Youth Government Days are also coming. There is an application on our website. All youth ages 14 to 18, please join us. It's a great two days that allows you an intimate look at local government and all the opportunities that are available in the town. And so when you get these Mayor's Youth Advisory kids coming on Thursday night, listen to what they have to say. They are really, we have a really sharp group of youth, and I'm extremely proud of the things that they've been able to accomplish. They have some great things on the horizon.
Councilmember Daniels, thank you. There's a reason why I skipped over this, but let me go back to it just to clarify. There, when we've not had a local pastor available, as opposed to looking to the council, I've been looking for citizens that have been here in council chambers. And I'll do that again, but as backup, our contingency, Councilmember Peterson, could you be prepared to do the invocation if needed? And then as far as the two agenda items, Councilmember Daniels, I would go ahead and take the lead on one in introducing them. And on the second item, Town Manager Baner, if you could take the lead on introducing that topic. And we won't have council assignments. I think I'll take the liberty of one more statement, and then I will not do it on Thursday night. And this is more the current events from Mayor. This morning, I did attend the monthly Gateway Board Meeting. And as part of, in addition to the regular business, which a key item was looking at the preliminary budget for next year, which we have access to, and I can share the details of that. But it was also the last board meeting that Executive Director Lynn Kuzi will be serving in his role. And so he put up the agenda of 20 years ago. And we looked at what was being discussed in 1993, and smiles went all faces in attendance because we have come a long way. And to Lynn Kuzi, who received a week and a half ago the recognition as the Gilbert Businessman of the Year, an additional comment was made that maybe he should be the East Valley businessman in the last 20 years. And so to Lynn and to his efforts, we express appreciation. The other item, I thank Dan Henderson and Kurt Sharp for joining me. We had a room of maybe 100 to 125 Realtors that we also call our Gilbert ambassadors, and they received an update on Gilbert today so they can go out and sell Gilbert. And we had executive housing DVDs for them, handouts talking about Gilbert, and that seemed to go very well. Anything else on Thursday night agenda? The next item on the study session agenda is number three. And Jessica, for the council, we did have this email sent today, but just in case council members did not get a chance to look at this, this is a hard copy. This is not, was just created, it was compiled, and I'm going to do a quick explanation of that, and then I'll have Jessica share some thoughts and also have town council jump in with questions. The background in this document is titled, and Jessica, would it be possible for those, and I realize it's small font, it would be a challenge for those in council chambers to see it, but at the same time, if we put it on the Elmo projector, that might be nice. This document is titled Social Services Nonprofit Support Plan. It's dated February 2013. The purpose of this document tonight and for our discussion is, there have been a lot of decisions made by the council, and occasionally, it's nice to just put it in writing so that it's a historical document for future purposes. We have more discussions that will take place, and so this might be document that can be used when decisions are going to be made in the future. So at a high level, there are three goals listed on this document. And the first one was that, as a council, working with our town leadership, that we wanted to determine priorities for social service needs in Gilbert. And on October 25th, and we did this last year, but again, on October 25th of last year with Jessica's leadership, through dialogue of the council, the five items that are listed under goal number one were discussed and agreed to by the council. The second part of goal number one that's documented are the dates, they're being followed. Jessica's taking the leadership, and that's what will happen, what has happened and will happen. And Jessica, that, again, for those in council chambers, maybe move that sheet up a little bit. So from January 31st to July the 1st, you will see what will be happening. Different than last year, instead of a Subcommittee, we learned a lot last year, and the council gave some good feedback. And so Jessica will take that lead, the council will receive feedback, and still have full approval as a policymaking group that will go forward. And that's the schedule that is listed. I'll continue on, and then we can go backwards. The goal number two was to identify social need, funding needs in Gilbert. And that too has had a lot take place. We've had specific numbers identified in the coming years, and that's also listed on the goal number three as to what those numbers are. And it is the desire to have a better fill for what we titled last year, Needs Assessment. And through that process, we did receive feedback. As a council, we realized that with our desire to move forward, that the individual that came to assess all that we had compiled, made some comments that we had some flaws in what had been done, and that he recommended we do a more formal process, which, under the direction of the council, Jessica received that feedback and has identified some funds that will help us do a more formal needs assessment. The council will need to make a decision whether we do an RFP process, whether we use resources we've already received. And that's, again, a future decision that we will make. The goal number three is where we have identified funding levels from the general fund. And as we've talked about, because we don't know the specific needs, we've made an assumption what they are. We've also had discussions as to how to come up with additional funding sources, whatever those needs may be. We've made some assumptions, and we'll go forward. We do have discussions, and even a few minutes ago, the Neighbor-to-Neighbor, that will be part of our Thursday night agenda, but also from a prior meeting, we talked about and approved the use of the advertising funds in the utility bill. That's an estimate. And so part of moving forward is to have some time elapsed so we can see exactly what those funds would be, and use the general funds that have been determined by the council, and merge that with the Needs Assessment and go forward. So there are some future discussions the council will have as to if there's a surplus, do we save those for a future year? Do we use those for other purposes in the general fund, not related to the nonprofits? That's not necessarily a discussion we need to have today for Jessica to move forward, but this is something that we can talk about in the future. And we can continue to talk about funding sources, which have been many, and that's part of future dialogue we'll have. So Jessica, that was my high-level summary that both brings the council to a document of decisions we have made, and notes a couple of decisions that will need to be made in the future, but gives us the plan that we're moving forward with for the coming months, and at least a high-level discussion as to some of the funds that are being looked at in coming years. Do you want to add anything to that?
Mayor, that was a very good overview. I think you've covered just about everything that was in this document, unless you have any specific questions.
And one reason why I did jump in is at the request of many. This was a joint Mayor Lewis, Jessica document. And you can probably tell the parts that are really good are from Jessica, the other parts could have been improved from the other guy. But to the council, do you have any questions about the compilation of decisions that we have made and moving forward? Vice Mayor Cooper?
This is a very good summary. I appreciate it, kind of reminding us all where we're at. Time is passing by though, especially when we have the drawdown schedule kind of in front of us. And so the sooner we can identify the needs, and the sooner we can really figure out where the funding is coming from, the better. Because my concern, while I did support the drawdown, it was really because I expected that there would be other sources of funding coming in. And so I know that's not the feeling that everybody has on this, on the council, but I'd like to see that. Everything we can do to expedite it would be helpful so that we don't put organizations in a bad place just because the clock has ticked away.
Thank you. Jessica, on that goal number two, the Needs Assessment, we have an August date, which is probably our decision point of moving forward. If you were to give an estimate as to when a Needs Assessment might be compiled, and we could have some numbers that have more validity, do you have an estimate on a timeframe?
Mayor, we would need to, we could, we could do some preliminary work prior to the new fiscal year starting, collecting data, things like that. The funding source that we've identified for the Needs Assessment doesn't start till the new fiscal year, so July 1. So we would probably have some discussions in July on whether or not we'd want to go out for an RFP or use some resources that we currently have. That will make a difference in the timeline as to whether or not we go out for full RFP. That takes a little while to put together and to advertise. But I would say, based on the scope of what we're looking at, we could probably get a Needs Assessment done hopefully in three months. The goal is to try and at least get some preliminary results before we start the new funding process for the 1415 funding year. And so when we do our funding process annually, we like to try and start early enough so that we have enough time to discuss what the priorities are going to be on the funding levels and put out the applications. This year, we did that in the November timeframe. So if we can get at least some preliminary results of the Needs Assessment by November, December, we should still be okay to use it for the next funding cycle.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor Cooper, this is a very small-scale approach, but one of the discussions for new funding sources is, and it's a challenge, because the nonprofits are out doing fundraising and our education groups. And so the part of the challenge has been in making sure that we're not taking away from other groups that are already doing fundraising. But we have seen, and there are many approaches to this, but we have seen how marathons or races have been a good way where people enjoy getting out. And so on March 23rd, the community will see the Gilbert Action Network, or Gilbert Can, doing a family run on a small scale just to see how it goes, that will be specifically targeted to fundraising for the Character Accounts Program. And part of using, this year, I'm going to say as a pilot, is to just, in a simple way, see how that goes and what happens, and then how we could take that first step and make it into a bigger event. And that could be one way, as an example, there could be some fundraising for the nonprofits. So more details will come on that. Councilmember Daniels?
Jessica, I'm wondering if we can't move up the discussion about whether we want to go out for RFP or use resources already available to us in order to complete a Needs Assessment. I guess the first step is to find out if we're all in favor of conducting a Needs Assessment, and then determine that, so that we are ready to put that RFP out. Obviously, we'd have to wait till July 1 to do that, but so that could be our sort of drop date for the RFP. I know you've got your hands full with budget and funding allocations and things like that over the next couple of weeks and months, but if there's any way, I think, to probably speed that up a little bit, Mayor, and then we for sure can have results by the end of the year, calendar year.
And to Councilmember Daniels, I realize you're not meaning now, but at the same time, Susan, based on the way this is written on the study session, realizing we're not doing any formal votes, but could we have a little dialogue right now? Is that appropriate? And again, not trying to keep us here too late, but we have a little bit of a window, so I'd be glad to hear any comments if it's just for a couple of minutes.
I am in favor of going out for a Needs Assessment.
And if, well, let's stop right there. Without voting, thumbs. And do you have some thoughts as to, as the Senate says, Joe West helped us? He's well...
I was a part of that community, the Community Services Subcommittee, so I don't have specific preferences of Joe or someone else, but I think there's probably several organizations that have the ability to provide that. I think going out for a competitive RFP is probably the best way, and maybe the best way for us to get the most competitive price. So I'd kind of leave it up to staff as far as, you know, writing the criteria for that and seeing if that fits, but that's...
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
I was just going to say that there are a lot of options to do this, and we can do it very inexpensively. There's students looking to finish their degrees in statistical analysis and things like that. For projects, they need to do things like this, and it's all monitored by their teacher who knows what they're doing. So there may be opportunities to do this. There's going to be parts, I'm sure there's going to be some expense, but I think we've already started that dialogue, and whatever staff determines, but there are a lot of good ideas out there, so.
Any other dialogue? So I think we had the discussion to do a Needs Assessment without voting. And then as far as some of this feedback would help you, is you might make a proposal for council to approve in moving forward.
Yes, Mayor, I will bring something forward in the April-ish timeframe about moving forward.
Thank you. The... Thank you. The fourth, and anything else on agenda item number three tonight? The fourth agenda item, we had a few minutes of discussion and I wanted to come back because there has been some follow-up. Councilmember Peterson, you made the comment that you've appreciated the study sessions. I think Councilmember Cook still wondering and, and it was interesting as I followed up, that I, I do not remember which agenda item it was or, and even which town leader it was, but there was a comment made that on one of the agenda items at our last meeting, that five of us made contact with that same town employee prior to the study session, which, you know, we're trying to do our homework and learn and, and then it gets back to, we all have our different styles and I'm not saying don't do that, but it, that might have saved that individual to just have him or her come and talk in the study session. But on the other hand, it, if our style is to do that, which is whatever works for us, then maybe we don't need a study session. And so there has been also the, the comment that one of the benefits of the study session has been, we have not had a Saturday meeting for a couple of years because we've been able to get together and have topics. And so then maybe it's we have one study session a month and it still gives that option. So I just, from the last council meeting, if you do have some additional thoughts related to the efficiency of study sessions and if they're still working or if we need to make adjustments, I'd be open to having some of your comments. Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, the main thing, the value that I get out of the study session is that it gives me a chance to hear some of the thoughts of the other council members and have time to process it. Because sometimes there's a big point, if you will, that you haven't thought of and so it's kind of hard to on the spot, on the dais, five minutes before you're voting, reconsider your position. It's a lot more helpful and when we hear those thoughts earlier on, we can process that, we can think about it. And so to me, that's the greatest value in it, just hearing from the other council members from my colleagues, so.
Councilmember Cook, please?
You know, for me, it's still, you know, I'll hold my thoughts to myself.
I need another year?
I need another year, I guess.
Okay.
I still feel fairly new at this.
Any other comments? So we certainly have the option of just continuing and to continue to think about it. And we do want to be efficient and I, I have felt myself that the quality of our Thursday meetings have been improved by having the study sessions, but, and I've also appreciated that we have not had Saturday meetings that brings in many of our town leaders and also frees us up to go to town events and do family activities, but Councilmember Daniels?
Mayor Lewis, one of the things I've wondered is when we moved or when we started having study sessions, everything, the name of everything got changed to special meeting. And I was wondering if there was maybe, for everything to be labeled special meeting, it takes away the meaning of the word special, right? And so I'm not sure, Kathy, maybe you can help us identify what we should be calling.
Mayor Lewis, Councilmember Daniels, the reason for about a year and a half, those were called special meetings is because we had not yet updated the code of Gilbert to reflect the days of your meetings. That's now been done, so if you'll look at your Thursday meetings, they're back to being called regular meetings.
Okay. And Susan, if we had, our normal schedule is the study session, the town council meeting agenda is published maybe a week before. And if it's published and council members gave feedback, say to the town manager, town clerk, that we didn't have any items that we felt like needed to be discussed, what is the latest date that that can happen so that we are being censored to the public that was planning on coming to a study session? Because that's another option, is that we go ahead and publish, we're going to do a study session on this Tuesday and yet we realize that the agenda is fairly light, we don't feel like we need to have discussion, we communicate that to the town manager, town clerk, and yet the public might have someone counting on it. When is the date where we need to cancel it by or postpone or something?
There's no legal date or time. It's more your consideration of, of the public and the more notice, the better, but the, the statutes don't govern cancellation of meetings. Our recommendation is that when you cancel a meeting, you post a notice on the door, but there's no timeframe.
And so Kathy, for a study session, that would mean that on a Tuesday, we'd need to know that by Thursday of the prior week to have it posted, or maybe even the Wednesday from the prior week to have it posted on Thursday?
Mayor Lewis, council, we could, if we were canceling the Tuesday study session, up until 3:55 PM or 3:59 PM, before you call the study session to order, we're still able to post the doors. So I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be the Thursday prior, it could be the Monday or Tuesday.
Thank you. So I, I think we can move on unless there is something else, but that's, for right now, we have study sessions that are still on the calendar, we'll move forward, but we'll be open to comments and, you know, if we want to consider doing one a month and see how that goes too, that could be another option. I did neglect one item, Kathy, as you were speaking, I remembered that for the council to be prepared on Thursday night, that there's an agenda item that will be added and it's tied to the town attorney interview process, that in a public setting, we wanted to have some dialogue as to the process. And as an example, and, and so that will be added and that will give us the ability to discuss on Thursday and that simply means, I'll use the town manager interview process as an example, that the council gave direction to town leadership to bring in the candidates on a day one and at a high level, certain steps took place, public could come the night of that day one and then the second day was the interview, three panels. And so it's, it's that type of discussion that we'll have on Thursday night to give direction to town staff as far as how do we want to proceed with the town attorney interview process. But it's not on there yet, but it will be.
It's prepared.
I look to my left, I look to my right and with the gavel, meeting adjourned.